Welcome to the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address the commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the commission. Please hand in your completed card to a city staff member. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The commission secretary will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting stream live on YouTube and online at goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
The April 9th, 2025 Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is called to order. Good evening and welcome. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the secretary note the role?
Of course. Commissioner Booth is present. Commissioner Hegidis is present. Commissioner Nepomucino is present. Commissioner Roberts is present. Commissioner Wang is on the phone. And Chairman Clymer is present. Vice Chair Sambito is absent. We have a quorum. At this time, a vote shall be taken to excuse members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. Is there a motion and a second to excuse Vice Chair Sambito from the meeting? I have a motion from Commissioner Hegidis and a second from Commissioner Booth. Please enter your vote. And Commissioner Wang, please voice your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Item number one is to approve the draft minutes of the last meeting. Will the secretary please read the recommendation?
Approve the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on March 12th, 2025. Is there a motion and a second for the staff recommendation? I have a motion from Commissioner Hegidis and a second from Commissioner Roberts. Please enter your vote. And Commissioner Wang, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Now is the time for all citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Are there any speaker cards?
I've not received any for non-agenda items.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, thank you. And now this is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any expertise communications they may have had prior to this meeting on any item scheduled for discussion on this agenda. Expert communication is any outside communication commissioners may have had regarding tonight's agenda. Are there any?
Nothing.
Okay. There is one public hearing on the agenda tonight. And as a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation board for city council. The commission will vote on each item and forward their recommendation to the city council. Council makes the final decision on all items. Agenda item number two is a Citrus Gateway PAD rezone. And tonight, Principal Planner Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez will be the presenter. Good evening.
If you could open the public--
May the chair commission members--
I'm gonna open the public--
Thank you.
There you go. Here we go.
Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, Principal Planner. Before you this evening is a zoning request for item Citrus Gateway. The subject property is approximately 267 acres. The property is located west of Citrus Road, south of Roosevelt Street, and south of a residential neighborhood within unincorporated Maricopa County. It is east of North Perryville Road and a row of combs also within unincorporated Maricopa County. And it is north of West Bamburin Street and Destiny RB Resort. The red dashed line on the screen shows the boundary between the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, and the city of Buckeye. The property has had a residential plan area development or PAD zoning since 2003, when it was rezoned from agri-agricultural urban to the Las Palmas PAD. In 2022, the city council approved a PAD amendment to rezon the property to R14, R16's single-family detached, and C2 general commercial zoning. Currently, the property cannot be subdivided due to Arizona Water Company's 100-year water designation limitations. Additionally, the property is located within the Luke Air Force Base graduated density contours. The west half of the property is within half a mile of the 65 noise decibel contour line, which is limited to build a density of 0 to 2 dwelling units per acre. The east half of the property is located within a half a mile of the 65 noise decibel contour lines, which is limited to a density of 0 to 4 dwelling units per acre. Last year, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approved a major general plan amendment for the property. The major general plan amendment changed the land use designation for the subject property from neighborhoods to business and commerce. The business and commerce land use designation permits various zoning types, including higher-density multifamily, commercial, business park, and light industrial. However, as we mentioned earlier, the property is limited to the density that it can have for residential due to Luke Air Force Base graduated density. The applicant is requesting to rezon the property from the Las Palmas PAD to item Citrus Gateway PAD to allow a mix of business park, light industrial, and general commercial uses. Shown on the screen is the proposed land use district map for the item Citrus Gateway. The PAD would allow business park district-- excuse me, business park district uses across the entire property. The business park district was created by the city in 2023 to provide an option for commercial and employment uses with the need for loading in dock doors on only one side of the building facing internally to the site and screened from public view. The business park district would allow uses such as professional offices, data centers, indoor entertainment, manufacturing, retail, restaurants, and warehouses. The PAD also proposes to include an option to develop business park and commercial uses adjacent to Citrus Road and on the southwest corner of the site, as shown in the peach color on the map. Commercial zoning would allow uses such as automobile repair shops, banks, retail restaurants, bus terminals, daycares, art studios, and funeral homes. The PAD includes the option to develop business park district uses or light industrial uses 300 feet inward to the site, as well as adjacent to the off-site water campus on the northwest corner of the site. This is shown in the hot pink. This means that on the hot pink area, the developer would be allowed to have business park or light industrial uses. Light industrial uses would include manufacturing offices, parking lots, research facilities, and cross-tuck warehouses. The PAD also provides the option to develop either business park, commercial uses, or light industrial uses, generally 300 feet inward from the southwest corner of the site, and generally located 300 feet inward on the northwest and south portions of the site along Citrus Road, shown in purple on the map. All the districts would follow the setbacks provided in the zoning ordinance and codified in the PAD, including additional setbacks adjacent to residential uses for the business park and commercial districts, which are located in the perimeter of the property. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to develop a furnished road along Roosevelt Street to separate local residential traffic from traffic generated from the site, mitigating any potential traffic impacts to the residential neighborhood to the north. In addressing residents' concerns expressed during the outreach process for the general plan amendment. The applicant is proposing to allow wireless communication facilities on all districts. The applicant added this due to their application after receiving feedback from nearby residents during the general plan amendment outreach process regarding connectivity issues in the area. The PAD also prohibits a few uses on the property. The PAD maintains the business park district maximum height of 56 feet within 300 feet of the project property line. So that is those business park, those green areas shown on the map, and the peach colors as well, 300 feet towards the interior of the site, limited to 56 feet in height. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to increase the maximum height of buildings to 70 feet for all districts inside that 300-foot buffer, with the option of submitting a use permit application request to increase that building height to 100 feet. And that use permit application request would allow staff, the planning commission, and the city council to respond to the proposal and consider any surrounding context at that time. Per the business park district standards, the developer is required to provide a minimum of 5% of the net site for recreational open spaces. Thus, the applicant has included a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail with their PAD proposal. This trail would go along the southern boundary, eastern boundary, and northern boundary of the site. And a minimum of 10 amenities would be provided throughout the trail. The citizen and public hearing processes were followed. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting in January. It was attended by seven nearby residents. At the meeting, residents had discussions with the applicant team regarding the furnished road, including egress and ingress access into their properties from Roosevelt Street. Since the initial publication of tonight's meeting agenda, staff received one letter of support from a nearby resident. Believe that letter was forwarded and also provided to you tonight. In the letter, a resident expressed support for the project and indicated that the applicant worked with her and her husband to address their concerns. Staff believes that the proposed rezoning is in conformance with the evaluation criteria provided in the zoning ordinance and detailed in the staff report. Staff is recommending the Planning and Zoning Commission forwards a recommendation of approval to the city council, subject to the stipulations found in the draft ordinance and attached to the staff report. Chair commission members, this concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also present tonight.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
Yes.
If you can get your mic on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Would you kindly put up that chart again showing the plan right there? Just for the benefit of the public, would you point the egress entrance point around this property?
Thank you, Commissioner Nepomucino, Planning Commission. At the rezoning phase, an entrance has not been established to the property during a sampling review application. Entrances to the site would be reviewed, and a traffic study would also be submitted for the project, and staff would review that as well.
Okay. The other question I have is the 10-foot walkway, that would be in lieu of the 5% requirement for recreational space?
The 5% of the recreational open space would include the trail.
So that will be in lieu of the 5% requirement for recreational space based on the zoning ordinance?
Thank you, Commissioner Nepomucino, Planning Commission. Staff would review the acreage of the trail with a sampling review. At this moment, the applicant is providing the trail as part of the 5% recreational open space.
And would that be lighted, that walkway?
That is a great question. I don't believe that we have defined all of the details, but lighting would be part of the trail that is required for-- it would be next to right-ofways, and right-ofways would also be required to be lighted.
So you mentioned in the public-- or in the meeting with the public here, between the developer and the public-- how have the concerns of the public been addressed? As you mentioned, there's been a compromise of some sort. But from the city perspective, how is that addressed in this proposal?
Thank you, Commissioner Nepomucino, Planning Commission. One of the residents' concerns, for example, was traffic, specifically for the neighborhood to the north of the project, north of Roosevelt Street. The applicant proposed the furnished road to separate the traffic between the residential neighborhood and the expected traffic from the site, mitigating that traffic. For instance, the furnished road will also have a landscape median that will provide additional buffers from the residential neighborhood to the north in the property. The PAD outlines that the developer is required to provide a 50-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of the site toward the northern, southern, and western boundaries that would also provide additional buffering from residential neighborhoods adjacent to this site.
The last comment I have is-- I have read the proposed ordinance for this project, and it's a good narrative of all the action taken on this project-- I mean, on this property, right? From annexing by the city to change in zoning designation. And I thought it was pretty good. The only comment I have is-- you know, back in December, the city council approved that resolution changing the zoning designation from neighborhood to business and commerce?
Correct.
Wouldn't that be included as part of the narrative for this ordinance?
Thank you, Commissioner Nepomucino, Planning Commission. I apologize if I did not mention it. That is correct. The Planning Commission and City Council held multiple public hearings in November or December of last year, changing the general plan land use designation from neighborhoods to business and commerce. That is correct.
So I would hope that if this is approved tonight, that before forwarding the ordinance to the city council, that those would be incorporated?
Thank you for the feedback. Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Only for now?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for staff?
So my understanding is that in the purple-- if you put that map back up there again-- they're proposing 70-foot limit on the buildings and a special use permit. They'd have to come back to us if they wanted to build it higher. Is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Hegidis, Planning Commission. That is correct. By right, if the PAD is approved, recommended by you and approved by council, the hot pink and purple areas would be allowed a by right height of 70 feet, as maximum. And if they wanted to-- if the developer wanted to pursue 100 feet, they would have to submit a use permit application to staff for review and would be presented for Planning Commission and City Council for feedback and approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like--
Can I have one more question, please?
Well, no, you already relinquished it.
Okay. I just forgot to ask you, just for the benefit of the public. Can you describe the setback on this? In other words, I've seen this picture here. So I know there's either 30-feet or 50-foot setback, depending on the size, right? So in that 30-feet or 50-foot setback, there would be no activity in that, right? Other than probably landscaping?
Thank you, Commissioner Nepomucino, Planning Commission. The PAD proposes 56 feet as maximum building height for the perimeter of the site. That would be a 300-foot buffer along the green and peach areas shown on the map here. For the areas within the site that are adjacent to residential, be it the west or the southeast, those buildings would have additional setback requirements based on the building height on this development site. Let's see here. I think I have an example here. For example, if a building on the west side of the development site was proposing a building height of 56 feet, which is the maximum here along the green area, they would be required to provide a setback of 50 feet plus 5 feet for every foot of additional height over 30 feet. So if it's 56, it would be an 180-foot setback for that building. So if it's fifty-six, it would be an a hundred-and-eighty-foot setback for that building. And as I mentioned earlier, there is a fifty-foot landscape buffer that would already be provided between those properties.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Now, would the applicant like to further enlighten us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could. Staff would be so kind to pull up our presentation, just a few additional details that I'd like to be able to share with the commission. Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, sixty-seven fifty East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of I-ten Citrus Gateway. Let me know when I can touch it. Thank you. So obviously, you've seen where the site is. I think one of the unique features of this site is we do sit right at the edge of the city of Buckeye. We do have Maricopa County bowls to our north and to our south, but of course, we also have Goodyear to our north, south, and to our east. We wanted to also show what is actually all been approved. When you look a little more holistically at Buckeye, when you look at Goodyear, you can see, you know, everything when you start on the east side, you've got from the high school, you've got the Crow Holdings, known as Ten Goodyear. Obviously, as you come a little bit further west, you ultimately see our site, that we've got the site plan that's plugged in there. And then as you go further west and look at Buckeye's site, you will see up and down Perryville, those are projects that are approved. So that is industrial that has been approved there in Buckeye as well. So I think very much in keeping with the context of what you see in the surrounding area, frankly, both north and south of the freeway. Request, of course, is from the Las Palmas PAD requesting to our PAD here to allow commercial, retail, business park, and industrial. And one of the questions you may have is, why rezone? It wasn't rezoned all that long ago to Las Palmas. And the answer is really pretty simple. It's, one, looking at the limitations caused by Luke Airport Base, we are within the overflight. So there is not much density that is ultimately permitted here. You've got the zero-to-two or the zero-to-four. Probably the other most significant issue is the change in water policy that came out of the governor's office, that we don't have the ability to subdivide or plat this for residential development as a result of that water policy. And of course, your point, Commissioner, all of this is supported by the general plan amendment that we processed before the end of the year to business and commerce. As staff mentioned, we have designed this in a way to be sensitive to the surrounding community. We limited the three-hundred-foot edge business park uses, obviously a pretty significant setback when you get up to the fifty-six feet. We've added commercial uses both along Citrus Road and ultimately along Van Buren, and really limited the industrial to the interior of the site. You had mentioned as well, Commissioner, about the multi-use trail. So it is not in lieu of open space, but it's something we're providing as part of our open space, is having that whole connectivity that will go around the site, around Roosevelt, Citrus, and ultimately down along Van Buren. That was very important to staff from the very first day we started talking about this case. You'll also see that we're incorporating these type of trail and fencing amenities that we... We really intend this to be a high-scale project, but we're creating some relatable elements along the edge as part of that trail system as well. And then also very high-quality architecture here, done by Butler Design Group, who's done a lot within the city of Goodyear, and I think a lot of buildings that have won a lot of awards. I know buildings that this community is very proud to call their own. And then community engagement, there has been a significant amount of community engagement on this case, both door-to-door outreach that was conducted, our neighborhood meeting, and then we've continued to have a significant amount of outreach with the neighbors, and we're very honored to finally earn support from Alma through those discussions. You had asked the question, Commissioner, why would we do? How'd we get there? The answer to that is this list really here, is we created the private access road along Roosevelt. I'm going to show you a couple of exhibits that explain what that means. But we created a landscape buffer between Roosevelt and the street frontage. We worked with the community to create designated school bus stops on that frontage road. That was a big concern that they had, that those were not safe. We added some additional access points from the frontage road at their request. We have included wireless communication facilities, because I think one of the problems they have is wanting more connectivity. We've allowed residents to have input on the landscaping, kind of along that frontage in front of their homes, and we were paying for it, installing Share the Road signs and striping on the frontage road. So that just gives you a high level of all the things that we've committed to do for this community. So if you go out and take a look at Roosevelt, this is what Roosevelt looks like today. Probably don't have to tell you that, you're probably pretty familiar with it. You'll notice, if you're out there for very long, that there's already a pretty significant amount of truck traffic. If you go back to that graphic that I showed at the beginning, all of the industrial that has been approved out here, this is already a truck route that gets utilized quite a bit, and it's a concern for the neighbors that have frontage there right along Roosevelt. So if we, when we first started, this is not what we're doing, but when we first started and we came in, this is what it would, typical development would look like. You would have our street, we would improve that road, and it would go right up against the residential on their road, they would be accessing and using the same road. Ultimately, through discussions with the community, we just, we simply didn't think that was a good enough solution and a good enough answer. So we worked very hard, we got with our design team, our engineering team, and our traffic engineers, worked with the city, worked with the community, and created a solution where we effectively shift the road a little bit south, so it still lines up. We take more of the burden of that road on our property, and we create a frontage road for these neighbors. We create a seven-foot landscaped median, and essentially keeping that area safe. So there, those neighbors, there's no one that will have any reason to go on that frontage road unless you live there or you're going to visit a friend. Otherwise, you come out onto Roosevelt, and then it continues to be used by truck traffic and more commercial traffic. So really, we think creating a much better solution for the community. This just, that road is long and the scale is very difficult to show, but at least gives you an idea if you look at it from an overhead perspective. Our project on the south, you can see the frontage road on the north, and you see Roosevelt, you can see how we shifted that road down and how we've made all of this ultimately work to create this better solution. So again, just kind of moving west, you can see the school bus stops up there on the frontage road, what that looks like, and then kind of one more, and how it all ultimately all tapers back. So pretty significant commitment by my client, willing to absorb much more of that road, build the entire road, build the frontage road, build the median, ultimately to create a much better solution, we think, for the city of Goodyear and for the community. As I mentioned, it creates safer school bus stops, we brought those school bus stops onto the frontage road, then protected from Roosevelt. And so, in summary, we would respectfully request your approval. Again, we're here because of Luke Airport Base and the changes in the water policy, the restrictions on the site. We were very pleased that you guys supported and the council supported the general plan amendment back in December for business and commerce. We've made some pretty significant commitments to the community accommodations as part of this application based on neighbor feedback. Those Roosevelt Street improvements, I think, create a much better situation than frankly even exists out there today. And then I think we're going to have a great, beautiful project that Goodyear can be proud of, with a multi-use trail and amenities around the perimeter. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we respectfully request your support.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for this lady? I think, see you ready to go, you pushed.
No, I just want to thank you, because you answered one of my questions more than enough, so this is a pretty good-looking proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
Yes. For Dale Hicks. Is that saying it right? All right. And just to let you know, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The screens will let you know how much time you have left to speak. And before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident.
Good evening. My name is Dale Hicks, I'm a Goodyear resident in the county area. I live on Perryville, I'm the third house south of Roosevelt on Perryville. I've seen all the information, talk about all the streets around there that they're going to do work on, and the entrance points. Perryville has two entrances to the freeway, eastbound and westbound. Citrus only has a westbound entrance, so that's going to put a lot of traffic, a lot of truck traffic, on Perryville, which is only two lanes each way. The speed limit, if you go south on the street, is forty miles an hour. If you go north on the street, it says fifty miles an hour. So which one is it supposed to be on the street? No one's ever said anything about that, and I'd like to find out information, what they're going to do about that. They put a stoplight in at Perryville and Roosevelt now, the traffic backs up past the front of my house in the morning now, and I can't get out of my driveway. So when they put trucks in there, what's that going to do to our street? That's my questions, thank you.
Okay, we have your name and number, and we'll try to get someone, I don't know that we could get any answer right now, tonight, but someone, someone contact you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. And I've also received two other speaker cards, both in support of the project, from Alma Oliveras and Jeff Levy, neither of which wish to speak.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Okay, come on up. You'll have to turn the speaker card in after you leave there, if you would, please.
Yeah, I got here late, you bet. Chairman Commissioners, Tracy Glass, I'm not a Goodyear resident, but my partners and I have owned property adjoining the subject for forty years. We just hit our fortieth anniversary, to put that in perspective. Goodyear was newly incorporated, there was no Palm Valley, there was no I-ten, yet connected to downtown Phoenix, and obviously, it's come a significant way since that time. We, over the years, especially lately, in the last couple of years, have been paying a lot more attention to new activity as we are in the county, but very much intend to explore the possibility of becoming annex someday, which of course requires a lot of things that we have not had, i.e. sewer, water, flood studies, all kinds of data that we're in the process of working on. In a nutshell, though, we're really excited to have the Citrus group as neighbors. It's a much-needed land use, it helps everybody out, they build the buildings, then you need more homes, and then you need more retail, and then you need more entertainment and city services, and used to be, retail follows rooftops. In our case, it would be something follows industrial, because that's what the applicant is going for, and just as evidenced by how full the buildings are getting on the Buckeye side of Perryville Road, I can't imagine that this project will do anything but complement the area. So I'm just here in support and want to work with the Goliath, we're the David, but happy to be that, and jointly work on any possible utility solutions and/or street improvement, traffic signal construction, et cetera, all part and parcel of being part of a regional That's it, that's what I got to say.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will Secretary please read the staff recommendation?
Recommend approval of a request to rezone approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-seven acres, generally located at the southwest corner of North Citrus Road and West Roosevelt Street, from Las Palmas Planned Area Development (PAD) to I-ten Citrus Gateway (PAD) to allow a mix of Business Park District (BPD), Light Industrial Park (I-1) and General Commercial District (C-2) land uses on certain areas of the property as set forth in the draft ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-xxx. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation, or you can voice an alternate motion? I have a motion from Commissioner Booth, and a second from Commissioner Nepomocino. The floor is open for commission discussion.
Okay, we can have some discussion on this. I was quite impressed, as was Ernie, about the process they went through, particularly the letter we received from Ms. Oliveras, referenced how much the project designers and developers have gotten with them and helped out the people nearby on their concerns. So I see nothing that's going to keep me from voting for this project. Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay, all right.
Well, I appreciate the fact that the developer, the applicant, work pretty closely with the residents in the area, and from what they presented today, I thought it was well-planned, you know? So the other thing is, I just want to make sure that the item I raised in the beginning would be addressed, so that even though we're making recommendations to the City Council, I want to make sure that this commission had done its homework before making a recommendation to the City Council. So, and I think, given what the issues raised today, I think we've done that. So we're not rubber-stamping any, anything to go to the City Council, so, and I think my concern is just make sure that we've done our homework, so. And I don't have any major concern not to approve this project, so, thank you.
Transparency, you know, is just so important. Being able to sit down and talk to people, being able to understand that, having the company and the people working, to get things done, is what this is for and actually meant about, so, yes, I concur.
Commissioner Wang, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I totally agree, especially they're willing to listen and work with the community. I have no reason not to agree with it. This is a good idea, it's a good project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, then please enter your vote, and Commissioner Wang, please voice your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
You have Mr. Hicks' telephone number on your...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Right, thank you.
Absolutely. The recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the April twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, are there any staff communications?
There are. During the March twelfth City Council meeting, residents spoke about the need to expand the notification and zoning request process, and Vice Chair, Vice Chairman Sam Beto requested that a meeting be scheduled to address that item. For a little bit of background, the zoning ordinance requires mailing notices for all properties that are within five hundred feet of the property to be zoned, and this is in conformance with state statute that requires a three-hundred-foot noticing for public hearings. The comprehensive zoning ordinance that update that is underway, that will include a review of the noticing requirements and studies of best practices in our peer cities. And this will be brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council at a future meeting for discussion and direction, likely later this year or early next year. And staff did call and leave a voicemail back to that resident after his attendance at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. In addition to that, at your meeting on March twelfth, you heard an item for a sixty-six-acre rezone located at the southwest corner of Interstate ten and Litchfield Road called Celebration Plaza. At the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting, the applicant requested that the item be continued to a future date, so that will be going back before council and potentially the Planning and Zoning Commission. And those are my updates.
Right. If nothing else, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on May the seventh at six p.m. in this chamber. The meeting is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.